Action item number. Wait, where are we? 11A B. We're up to the bylaws, correct, Mrs. Lanetti?
Correct, you are at action item B, sorry, 11B2. And just to explain, explained this last week on this case. B2, B3, we're not going to do B4 at the moment, which is bylaw 139. And bylaw 147 are all actually related. And as I've explained to you before, some of the things that were in the standing rules, we decided to take out so that you'll see those were, show up back in 118, 139, and some of it in 147, so they're all related. A lot of this came out of the governance committee looking at a norms and protocol by manual that we want to use in the future with the school board. And we started questioning, why do we have some of the things there? Just an example, the standing rules, you have two appendixes to your bylaws. One of them is a standing rules that come out, which basically shows how you run your meeting and set your agenda. The other one has to do with rules that you use during your meetings. Just an example, one of the things that came across is you'll notice tonight, you adopted your agenda at 9:51 at night. You had already been in a meeting since 4 o'clock or 3:30 in the afternoon. One of the things we're pointing out, sometimes the way the order in which you're doing things didn't always make sense. And those were some of the things we were discussing governance when we were going over this. And after a lot of work at it, we've made some suggestions on that. I'm not going to go through all of it, but what we've generally done on appendix B is to reorder some of the things. We want to move earlier into the agenda process, adopting your agenda on there, approval of the minutes. We talk about speakers. Again, there's been multiple discussions about that, and this is one of the significant areas that we've talked about speakers on there. It's been very obvious, particularly in the last couple of months, as we're trying to manage speakers, and now we're managing speakers on multiple platforms, probably in-person and electronic on telephone or on Zoom. Coordinating those speakers, when we have large amounts of speakers, there were 60 speakers signed up today. We've had that many, and there's a lot of coordination that goes into that. Looking through the bylaws, you had multiple times that you had speakers. It was actually four different times and dates that you could have signed up for speakers. It was very confusing for us. So I suggested this time is we are asking for noon on the day of the meeting. So you could have signed up to noon today. And that allowed us time, whether, I know there's some discussions about it, but if you've not watched what those folks in the hall are doing with the speakers, there is a lot of coordination that goes on with speakers, pretty much from 12:05 this afternoon for about an hour or two. Took a long while for them to organize it. There's a lot of work that involves, and they are asking that they have for noon for the day of the meeting to organize the speakers. The suggestion has been to move it from three to four. I would just note with 60 speakers, had you removed one minute, you would have been an hour earlier than we are tonight on there, so that suggestion's in there. You'd also have the recommendation, if you notice tonight, you made a motion early on not to stop agenda items speakers at 7:30. That was one of the discussions that we had, pretty, a long discussion at governance put this, and eventually coming up to PRC, was that if we were going to reduce the time on that, then we want to make sure all the agenda item people had an opportunity to speak. Because your normal process pursuant to the standing bylaws, standing rules, is that you would stop at 7:30, pick up your agenda, and then pick back up with the agenda item speaker. So what could happen is you could have been voting on an agenda item, and speakers that want to speak on it had to stop because you stopped at 7:30. So the recommendation is to do what you did tonight, which is go ahead and have everyone who wants to speak on agenda items before you pick up the items that you're going to either do information or you're going to vote on. So one of the trade-offs in reducing the time is that you would then allow everyone the opportunity to speak first, and they thought that was a reasonable amount of time on there. You'll see a couple of their changing things around that we're doing on that, nothing particularly significant. Again, as I mentioned, there's a long explanation on the criteria for when you would do awards. We moved that over to another bylaw, same thing as the procedure for electing your chair. It didn't make sense here, that's been moved into a bylaw. With that, those would be the recommendations for changing the agenda items on appendix B. So you would be taking a motion this time to approve the recommended changes to bylaw appendix B, school board standing rules.
Right, I'll entertain motions before we have any discussion. So a motion to approve this appendix B. Mrs. Anderson, a second. Mrs. Riggs, okay, discussion.
I've got a question.
Mrs. Williams.
I'm sorry, I don't have in front of me, but so the appendix B, school board standing rules, that does, does that include the change in minutes, or is that a separate one?
Yes, because you set, well, it's going to show up in another one. You see it back again in bylaw 147. It's been embedded into the different areas in the agenda, because appendix B sort of follows how your agenda format is, so you would understand.
So it's in two places tonight?
Two places in this bylaw, and it will show up in another policy. So yes.
Okay.
We mirrored what you do with agenda item speakers with non-agenda item speakers, so that they match in the times. And it comes up twice in this particular bylaw. You will also see it again in bylaw 147 on public comments at school board meetings.
Okay, I do have a comment then. You know, I mean, Regina had to say 30 seconds almost with every speaker. Ever since we've changed the four minutes, they're still taking up most of their time. I mean, some don't, some aren't even going to take three minutes. But if somebody drops 30 minutes to get down here and waits two hours or an hour to speak, let them have the four minutes, because I'm not, I'm finding what we've seen is they really need the four minutes. And like you said, we very rarely have 60 or 70, you know, 100 speakers, but, I mean, even if they're 60, if they take the time, I don't mind staying an extra hour, because I think that most of our speakers are using four minutes. And we saw, you know, we saw it tonight where Regina's constantly saying 30 seconds left, and, you know, they're having to hurry up, and some of them are going to have to email us. So I think the four minutes is fine. I don't have any trouble doing four minutes. And I hope we keep it like that.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs, was your hand up?
Madam Chair, can you please add Ms. Manning and Ms. Hughes to the queue?
Yes. Ms. Owens?
I just wanted to kind of, I guess, piggyback off of Ms. Wiens. I, it does make our meetings longer, and it's okay with me if that's where we're at. I think that right now, we have a lot of important things going on with our district, with our procedures, with our plans. People come in and they want to speak on more than one topic, and it's hard to do, would be hard to do that in three minutes, it's hard to do it in four. Today, we had equity policy, we had school reopening plans. If people want to come in and make their voices heard, I want to give them the opportunity to do so. It makes our day longer. I think we can, I think we can do that. I think that's, we can, we can do that for them. That's my thought.
Thank you. Mrs. Riggs.
Even though I was one that helped to adjust this, I felt the same way as Carolyn Wiens does, and Jessica just said. I've been a recipient of this time, as the president of VBA having to come and speak a lot, and it's, the three minutes just was not enough. And we, as Carolyn said, we don't do this all the time. Yes, it's been the last couple of times. This is unusual circumstances, and I just feel like if people are taking the time, they should be able to have that four minutes. That minute is important, believe me, I know. And I just, I agree. So I think they should have that time.
Thank you. Mrs. Manning.
Yeah, I just want to say that I do not support limiting public input by reducing their time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hughes?
I would like to make sure that the people that we work for, the public, do have the time to speak. I do not think we should be limiting their time. And honestly, I think they should be able to sign up past noon. Typically, when they're getting the agenda, it comes sometimes later in the day on Thursday. We're going into the weekend, and then, you know, Monday's the beginning of work week, getting ready for school, that sort of thing. And, you know, noon on Tuesday, some of these people are still at work, and I think giving them until 3 o'clock to sign up is perfectly reasonable. I know, you know, at city council, for instance, they can sign up when they get there. I don't know what they're doing different that allows the public more freedom like that, but, you know, that might be worth asking to see. But I'm unwilling to vote for anything that limits public input.
Felton. Thank you, Chair Ryan. In reference to getting the agenda done, I would like to respect Regina's time as well. I know she's getting calls all day, and she's answering calls and getting those in. So I'm thinking if we prolong that time before we, if we don't have a cutoff time, what time does she have to organize herself to get things together, to make the meeting run functionally? It's about function. But I would like to also agree with Ms. Wiens concerning the three minutes. I think that we should consider our individual who's coming down and their work hours, and I know from personal conversation that when we changed it to four minutes, it gave people more of an incentive to come. And that was a personal conversation. So they are liking that they have more time. So I'm with the other three that came before me. I would prefer that it stays at four minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Felton. And Mrs. Anderson?
So this was a discussion that we had on the policy, and we were kind of all divided on it. And I can live with keeping it at four minutes. We stayed at three minutes for many, many, many years. You can ask Mr. Edwards. And I was also the recipient of trying to get all my remarks in for three minutes. But I can live with, you know, keeping it to four minutes if that's what the will of the board is right now. But I do think we do need a cutoff for when people, I think noon on the day of our meeting is a good time for people to have to get to get their, if they're going to sign up or not. Because for one thing, Regina and everybody else that helps get everything ready, they have to have things ready. And you notice there were even a couple of names on the list, even this, you know, because this has to be developed and all that. So there's a lot to go into preparing, especially as long as we're having Zoom meetings, Zoom meeting speakers as well. So if, do we need a motion, a substitute motion?
Yes, and I was, I wanted to remind.
So I will make a substitute motion to switch this back to four minutes for each speaker.
And I just want to make the note, there's a number of other adjustments in this appendix. So it would, the substitute motion is just to change that one point.
Yes.
To make it clear for everybody.
Grab a second. Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand.
The vote is on the amended motion. The only difference, it will remain at four minutes instead of three minutes.
Right.
Voting in favor of leaving it at four minutes was Ms. Riggs, Ms. Felton, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Wiens, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Ry, Mr. Edwards, and Ms. Holtz, Ms. Owens, and via Zoom, Ms. Hughes and Ms. Manning also vote to keep it at four minutes, so it is unanimous to keep the speaker time at four minutes.
Okay, moving on to bylaw 118. This is going to be really easy. If you look at the end of bylaw appendix B, the final paragraph had to do with the procedure for the annual organizational meeting where you elect the chair. Didn't make a lot of sense for us to be there. We just took that out and incorporated what wasn't already into bylaw 118, which actually has to do with the election in term of the officers for the board. That's all we're recommending here, is take what was there in bylaw appendix B and move it over here and fill it in with bylaw 118, which already was there in dealing with the election of the chair. So that is the only recommendation we're making for this bylaw.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Mrs. Riggs, a second. Mrs. Felton, discussion. Any discussion with our Zoom attendees?
No discussion for Zoom.
All right, then. All those.
Point of water, real quick, before we do this. I know that we voted on my amended, the amendment that I made, but did we vote on, are we planning to go back and vote on the standing rules by themselves, the main motion?
No, as I read the motion, the amendment was to, you would adopt the standing rules with the only change being that you would remain with four minutes instead of three minutes. It became a substitute motion.
Thank you.
Were we, forgive me?
You need to vote on this.
What stuff were we at?
You were voting on 118, which is the, had to do with the election of the chair.
Thank you. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we do have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Moving on to bylaw 139, this is the one we're pulling off. The only thing I'm going to mention to you is this is the other part of the standing rule where it talked about the awards. We were going to have it, we were adding it back to this section. We're pulling it off not for that reason. It came to our attention, there was some issue with how things got in the agenda. We had never thought of that. In looking at this, we're going to pull it back to look at that. That's the reason we're pulling back 139. But in 139, what you took out of standing, standing role, standing rules is pulled back into this. 147 has to do with the public comments on the school board. There are a couple minor changes that we talked about signing up for that, but this on subsection C, time limits, you just moved not to go to three minutes. This is where three minutes shows up again, so I'm assuming that you're going to want to amend this to go back to four minutes and pull out some superfluous language. The only thing other than we added there is that the school board chair and the superintendent could work on presentation, how you ordered speakers, some of the details, like how we line them up in the hall and things. We suggested that that be handled with there, because there's some details that just need to be worked out. Other than that, we're pulling out documents, because we don't think that's necessary anymore. So this, if you adopt, if you make a motion to go back to the four minutes, you're really just taking out some of the limitation of the time periods, which matches what you just did on the standing rules.
So we can ask for that without asking for a motion on the original, since we know we're changing the original? I haven't yet asked for a motion on this. Can we just ask for the substitute motion?
You could.
Yeah, okay.
I make a substitute motion.
Mrs. Anderson?
Substitute motion that we stick with four minutes instead of three minutes.
And otherwise, as noted, okay? And a second, Mrs. Riggs? Okay? Any discussion? All right, all in favor, please raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
This moves on to policy 332. 332 has, in the business and instructional operations, has to do with emergency, small and sole source purchases, as presented to the PRC by the Director of Purchasing. He felt we needed to clarify subsection B. And this talks about the following items, when the dollar amount is below $100,000, we'd be exempt from competition. He brought forth a list, a very small list of contracts that he said do not, in these particular categories, probably about 30, that simply are not, it's not worth the time to compete, because there aren't that many organizations that, or companies that provide these things. So he's asking that they be exempt from the purchasing, procurement responsibilities, because there simply was not competition out there, and they basically had to go to certain sources to get those contracts. It didn't make sense to spend the money to try to get competition. And that is the only change that we are recommending to policy 332.
All right, so we'll ask for a motion in a second, and then when we get to discussion, I see Mr. Hanziger is here too with any questions. So a motion to approve this policy 332 as amended. Mr. Edwards, in a second. Mrs. Holtz, thank you. Discussion. And none, Ms.?
Madam Chair, Ms. Manning has her hand raised. Ms. Manning, do you have a discussion on the policy?
Yes, I do.
Please go ahead.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I just don't understand why we wouldn't want to have competitive purchasing on items number one and two, specifically instructional software and digital resources. I know that there are thousands of companies that provide that. So I'm a little confused as to why we wouldn't want competition on that.
I'll start by thinking what the Director of Purchasing spoke.
He actually pulled out the list of contracts that fell into these categories, because of the amount of category, the money involved in that. And it was actually probably less than 30 in these different, four different categories. And he simply felt that there's, that we're not, for the amount of money that we were dealing with, these type of contracts, there simply wasn't a lot of competition. I'm not sure if I explained that as well as I could. Mr. Hanziger may be able to do a better job.
Good evening. Kami, I think you did a great job. Basically, it's, it's things, it's not just the instruction materials, but, for example, assessment test, things like the pre-SAT, the things like Microsoft Network certifications, those aren't really competitive. So it doesn't make any sense to spend extraordinary amount of time. On the instructional materials, it's some of the same kind of things every year. And this doesn't necessarily mean that we wouldn't get competitive bids. It would mean that if the Director of Purchasing is knowledgeable that this particular kind of materials is like some of these other kind of sole source things, then we wouldn't get competitive bids and go ahead and allow that procurement to take place.
Thank you, Mr. Hanziger.
I completely understand the assessment test and the industry certification, and maybe even to some degree, the instructional materials. But the software and digital resources, I just know that there are so many different companies out there that we could have many, many different options and provide, you know, I just, competitive bidding is pretty important to me. And so I just, I appreciate your explanation, but that's one that I'm having a tough time with.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Manning, if it's any help, because I have to look at all the contracts. The, for a division of this size, when you're purchasing a lot of this digital stuff, you are, most of these contracts are very large, and they're going to apply to everybody, are going to be well over $100,000, in which you will have to do procurement, just because you have so many students or so many employees, you're not, there aren't a lot of these smaller digital contracts. There are some, but not to like, the vast majority of the digital type of contracts are going to be for well over $100,000, because there, you have so many people that need to access them.
Any follow-up, Mrs. Manning?
No, thank you.
Any other further discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Okay, Madam Chair, we had affirmative vote from Ms. Riggs, Ms. Felton, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Wiens, Ms. Melnick, Ms. Ry, Mr. Edwards, Ms. Holtz, and Ms. Owens, and Ms. Hughes. Ms. Manning, what is your vote?
No.
Thank you. And we had one negative, one opposed.
Moving on to, I'm sorry. Moving on to policy 389. This is again under the business and instructional operations. This has the general contract execution policy. This will probably be the easiest thing I can offer you all night. The only recommendation we're making will be in C, which has to do with contract review approval, number four, availability of funds. As with many of the procurement areas in the law, the amounts that have to be followed in certain of these areas have gone up, and the Director of Purchasing, Ms. Hanziger, recommended that we change the amount, which used to be $5,000 to $10,000, and that comes in two different sections under availability of funds. I believe it comes, and it comes up again in section E, contract authority. Again, moving the amount to $10,000 instead of $5,000. And lower than that, you'll see we've upped the amounts from five, 3,000 to 5,000, 11,000 to 6,000, until 11,000 appears later in subsection A. And there's minor scrip and changes throughout. So those are the recommendations. That's consistent with many of our policies, and the amounts are moving up over time. And those would be the only recommendation we'd be making to policy 389.
Okay, motion to approve, Mr. Edwards. Second, Mrs. Melnick, discussion. Okay, seeing none. All in favor, raise your hand.
Madam Chair, we have a unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Mrs. Lanetti. So that brings us to information, beginning with the budget calendar. Mr. Hanziger, again.
Thank you, Ms. Ry. Budget calendar is our, our process with dates, benchmark tasks, that things have to be done, beginning this month, all the way through the 15th of May, which is the date that the city council by Virginia code must adopt a budget ordinance. This calendar has the, kind of the strategic action items that mostly staff has to do by certain dates. Some important dates in here for the board, February the 2nd, which will be a special board meeting, because we have to, that's the first meeting to Tuesday, that we will have to have you adopt the budget, so we can meet the city's deadline for including our budget to present to the city council. Recall, just as in the past, every Tuesday in September after the 2nd, you will have a budget workshop. So there will be three budget workshops in February if needed. And if needed, there could be a fourth one on the date that you're scheduled to adopt the budget, which is March the 2nd. There will be two public hearings during this span of months, which is required by state code. And the city council typically adopts the budget ordinance typically before May the 15th. It's usually between the 10th and 12th, 13th of May. We will have an opportunity to present our budget to the city council in probably the first 10 days of April of '21. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Spence?
I would just add an additional, quick layer on, and I see she stepped out, but for the other members of the PPMC and for Ms. Wiens, when she comes back, that we would use this calendar to also help inform our meetings with the PPMC and the run-up to the budget presentations.
Thank you. So, did I see a hand, Ms., no? All right then, thank you.
Thank you.
And? Dr. Robertson, hello.
So I was going to say good morning, but it's not, it's not, not quite.
So updates on student scheduling and transportation, which we were briefed on in the workshop, and there, I know you'll give a quick summary, and we'll see if there were, if those questions from a few hours ago remain, or if there are any new ones, okay?
Yes, ma'am. So, good evening, Chairwoman Ry, Vice Chair Melnick, members of the board, Dr. Spence. Tonight, David Pace and I will provide a brief update with information related to student scheduling, as well as on the reopening transportation plan and the technology advances in the Office of Transportation Services. As you can see on the slide, they were able to accomplish many things since our last meeting. All students and staff had schedules as of August 31st, and they all had schedules and are learning virtually, starting yesterday. And as we completed scheduling process, we are continuing to enroll new students. We'll continue to do so. That's no different than what we come across each year. But I was very proud of the instruction that occurred yesterday, really proud of the teachers and how they stepped up. There are some things we're going to have to, we're going to have to address in the coming weeks, related to class size, as a result of the impact on some mitigation strategies, as well as some things around family choice and staff preferences. At the same time, as always, we are continuing to staff any remaining vacancies in our schools, and we've And we have received some additional funding to staff teachers for the Virtual Learning Center. Moving forward, we have a bit of a challenge that we're going to be addressing. And that is that, as a scheduling mechanism, we did, at the secondary level in particular, schedule some option-two students into option-one classes as a means to get the schedules complete. And of course, we're going to have to make some changes to schedules when we pivot to face-to-face. We have a plan in place to address that, to try to minimize, to the greatest extent possible, how many students could be affected with a schedule change. And we're going to do that through three ways. The first is Dr. Spence, with the assistance of Mr. Hunsacker, has agreed to allow us to use some CARES funding to pay teachers a stipend if they would agree to continue to keep their students in option-two, in their option-one classes, when we pivot back to face-to-face and teach both groups at the same time. I didn't share this earlier with Ms. Rye, but I think it's, this is how this idea came up. It came up from a teacher who indicated, do I have to give up my kids when we pivot to face-to-face? What about if I want to keep them? So this was a teacher who brought this idea forward, and that generated some conversation with other teachers. And it was like, okay, well, you know what? If they're willing to do it, let's see if we can find some funds for them. And so we're able to find some funds for the stipend idea. So that's the first phase of the plan. The second phase of the plan is, we did not use the standards of quality to set class caps. And the class caps that are established by the standards of quality give us a little bit more room. So we're going to make some minor adjustments to class caps in option-two, as we talked about earlier in the air, to try to keep more kids connected to their home school. That's our goal, keep more kids connected to their home school, more teachers connected to their home school, because that connection is so important for social, emotional learning. After we do that, the third phase of the plan is, we will look at initiating the central virtual learning center. And so we've got all of our pieces in place for that. And as I talked about earlier, which doesn't make me a real popular person, I got several texts earlier, but we just, we, I can't turn this around by September 22nd. And so I've talked with Dr. Spence, and I've made a request that we really need two more weeks. I am 100% confident, I would never let you down. I didn't let you down when I said stuff two weeks ago. We'll be ready to roll October 6th. That additional time will allow us to be purposeful in working with our students and our teachers and our families to ensure we, again, we're trying to move the fewest number of kids as possible to keep them connected to their home schools. Two more weeks allows us to handle some of the staffing vacancies we still have and also be thoughtful and purposeful about trying to move these students. So at this point, I want to turn it over to Mr. Pace.
Thank you, Dr. Robertson. Good evening, again.
Hello, again.
I'll try to go through this a little, pardon me? Is it that time off? Well, I'll try to go through this a little quicker than I did at the workshop, just to give you the highlights. Our first slide here shows the form that we've asked parents to fill out to request transportation. With the mitigations that we have to do, we need this. This information is crucial to us putting the number of students on the bus that can account for social distancing. As you can see, from the numbers, we've had some good turnout from parents as of September the 4th, about 10,500 elementary, 22,000, 2,300 middle school, and about 2,600 for high schools. And like I say, that's all important for getting the kids on the bus and having sure enough, we've got room on the bus to keep 22 to 44 students for distancing. One of the concerns that I've heard is, we're going to have enough buses and drivers to provide the service? And yes, the answer to that is yes, in the yellow, yellow phase. Because of the reduced numbers of students that we are transporting, we'll have enough bus drivers to provide the service and to cover the routes of absent drivers and cover the routes of vacancies that we have. As an example, we typically carry 20,000-plus elementary students every school year. With 10,642, it will take obviously a lot less buses to perform that service. We expect that 10,642 to grow a little bit because we'll continue to get kindergarten students registered and pre-K students registered. And of course, some parents who have not responded yet. So we do have those anomalies to deal with. One of the challenges we have is the substitute drivers. This has been additional problems we've had with this this year because of the COVID. There's restrictions at DMV. We can't take drivers down and applicants down and get a CDL as we did in groups. We now have to give them a, an appointment. And those appointments, right now, are running into October and November. We are trying to mitigate those issues. We did get temporary permission from the DMV to give our own CDL exams. But we are still finding that with the pandemic, we're not getting the number of applicants than we have in the past. But the bottom line of it is, we do have enough drivers with the numbers that are registered for transportation to reopen in the yellow, yellow phase. And we'll continue to work and plan for, as we phase other students back in as well. How will the students sit on a school bus? We discussed this with a panel of medical experts. And we said, well, if we can, our goal is one to a seat, which is 22 to a school bus. But because of impacts on some of the other operating programs, we requested a decision on possibly going up to two to a seat. And they agreed that that would be okay if it meant that the children could be taken to a program for face-to-face instruction. But we'll only use two to a seat if it's absolutely necessary to keep that schedule for the children. They supported this two-to-a-seat with the understanding that there'd be face masks for all the students. The younger students are less susceptible to the virus. Of course, smaller students are sitting down below the top of the seat in front of them, so it makes a natural barrier for them. And they encourage siblings and close friends from the same bus stop sit together. So we'll be implementing that as well. However, in order to clean the bus and so forth, we did have to tweak the operating hours, school operating hours. For the high schools, their seat time was reduced from 6 hours and 50 minutes to 6 hours and 40 minutes. And we added 10 minutes between school levels to provide the driver's time to clean the bus between runs. And also try to take into consideration some delays that may occur now that more parents will be bringing their students to school. That move of shifting them for 10 minutes or so creates the middle school's time operating schedules to move from what it is currently to 10:00 AM to 4:30 PM. Seat assignments, as you can see in the slide, we're using an airline kind of seat numbering, 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D. We felt this would be easier for the children to remember their seat assignment because once they get assigned to the seat, they'll sit in that seat all year. We'll load the students from the back to the front, with the exception of the kindergarten and pre-K. And the bus driver will assign them a seat up front, as historically we've always done. The loading, I mean, the unloading and loading procedures at the school will be handled by the school administration with a lot of assistance from the transportation staff. If a parent does need to change from a no-bus need to a bus need, they will need to understand that that will be on a case-by-case basis on the space available. Because once we do this scheduling to put the number of students on the bus for the social distancing, it's sometimes very difficult just to make a change quickly. This slide shows all the PPE equipment that we're providing school bus drivers in order to keep them safe and the students safe. We also are, we developed a training video that we're incorporating into our in-service meetings so that the drivers know how to clean the bus, the seating requirements, the personal protective equipment that they need to wear, and how to handle the unique situations if the student does not want to wear a mask or cannot wear a mask. If that happens, we will not leave a child at a bus stop. If the child is not wearing a mask, the driver will give them a mask, take them to school, turn them over to the school administrators, and have the school administrator talk with the parent. The other things that we have, as you can see, are gloves and face shields and sprays to wipe the seats down. We do not have large amounts of hand sanitizer on the bus because it's 60% alcohol, and it's very flammable, and it's not allowed. But we are going to encourage parents through various communications to wash their hands before they get on the bus. And then, of course, when they get to the school, the school has sanitizers available. How are we going to notify parents? We have a plan to notify the parents. We anticipate uploading the student stop data into the student information system so the parents can access their child's stop information through ParentView. We'll send an alert now to the parents to make them aware of that. And when it is available, they can get notification of the assigned school bus stops for the children and the time to be at the stop, as well as the scheduled drop-off time. Another important project we're working on is the Edulog Parent Portal Full. We currently have Parent Portal Light fully operational, but the Parent Portal Full offers a lot more capabilities to the parents. Parents want to know when their bus will reach their child's stop, when that bus arrives at the school, and that their child safely returned home from school or an extracurricular activity. The Parent Portal Full helps provide all that operational transparency, and it gives real genuine peace of mind to the parents about the safety and security of their child. As I said, last year, we rolled out Parent Portal Light. This year, Parent Portal Full will be another option to track their child's school bus. It integrates, this app integrates with our routing software and gives parents real-time information regarding the bus's ETA to the child's stop, as well as any bus substitutions that may occur. This app will also notify parents of any changes to the route, stop, or time schedule. We can also send push notifications to the parents. In the event we have to close early due to inclement weather or the power goes out at the school, or any other such emergencies, we can get that information to the parent very quickly. The application will also give us future capabilities to be able to know all the students who are on the bus as they get on and get notified of the students as they get off. So it gives that good accountability. The differences between the light version and the full version. The light version traces a specific bus that the parent identifies. If they put in bus 10, it'll trace that bus. It does not have the ability to, if bus 10 is substituted with bus 1, it doesn't have the ability to make the parent aware of that. The full version does. It tracks the, the, the light version tracks a specific bus. The full version automatically traces any bus that's covering the route. It's AI, artificial intelligence, as soon as it gets to the first stop, no matter what the bus number is, that's the information that gets sent to the parent. And finally, in concluding, I would like to provide a safety message to the motorists as school buses return to the roadways. One of the most abused safety issues in school bus transportation is the violators of the school bus stop law. Many of the biggest injuries to students riding the bus to and from school occur not when the bus is moving, but when students are loading and offloading. As I mentioned earlier today, there could be up to as many as 15 million passing, vehicles passing stop school buses in every 180-day school year. Therefore, as you can see from the picture, we have installed 150 cameras on the exterior of the school bus to capture the license plate number of those violating the school bus stop law. These pictures and video are monitored by the Virginia Beach Police Department, and citations are issued to the owner of the vehicle. The program has the sole purpose of improving safety for the children loading and unloading a school bus by educating motorists on the law to reduce or eliminate passing violations. I would certainly encourage all motorists to be aware of school buses stopped to load and unload children as we return to normal and the buses return to the roadways. Any questions?
We thank you, Mr. Pace.
You're welcome.
Okay, any questions for Dr. Robertson on scheduling that were not answered before? I'm sure you can follow up with him tomorrow. But I don't want to, what?
Today.
Today. Yes, Ms. Owens?
Okay, my question is in regards to the extended two-week thing before we're ready to start. You mentioned, so two weeks would be October 6th because that's the following Tuesday, because we're not going on Mondays. But when I, looking at the academic calendar, I see that for the secondary term one, marking period two starts on October 8th. And I'm just wondering if it makes the most sense for us to do a transition to face-to-face where we're saying that some students are going to have to change teachers when they switch to face-to-face two days prior to the end of the marking period in which they would then perhaps change teachers again? Does it make more sense for us to wait until after October, or the start of the next marking period, which is October 8th, within that same week?
Yeah, we can look at that. Well, now, now on the four-by-four.
Madam Chair, Ms. Manning has her hand raised. Go ahead, Ms. Manning.
So, it's my understanding now that we can't get these kids back into school until October the 6th due to scheduling issues and employment issues. Is there any way we can get any of our kids back to school? Can we get our special education students back? I mean, can we, can we send some grades back?
Yeah, no, we're, we're...
Yeah, I am, I'm processing the...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, no, no problem. The scheduling, the complexity of scheduling, particularly in grade six and nine, is like a set of dominos. As soon as you make one change, the next domino falls, and then the next domino falls. So I think the secondary level would be much more problematic. At the elementary school level, depending on the data that I get back by the end of the week...
Let me help you out, Don. I don't think we can make any wholesale commitments to bringing back grade levels, for example, because of the complexities that Don's talking about. I think we could at least look at, because I know we've already been having some conversations with our special education parents, similar to what we, the conversations we had about the extended school year, there may be some opportunities there. But I think that would be about as far as we could get.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, I couldn't hear that very well. Can you, could you repeat that?
What I said was, I don't believe that we can get wholesale change, like grade level change, because there are complexities with scheduling that are impacted by that across grade levels and across schools, quite frankly. But I do think, I know that we've been engaged already with parents in conversations about special education, similar to the conversations we had around extended school year and that there may be some things that we can do there. And we'll have to circle back with Dr. Myers-Dobb and see how those conversations are going.
Yeah, I mean, I would like, let's get as many of our kids back as we can. Let's not hold up everybody if this is a, say, like Dr. Robertson said, sixth and ninth grade is a challenge. Let's, let's get our kids back to school who we can get back to school now.
I just want to be clear. We're not going to bring back, we cannot bring back wholesale grade levels, schools, et cetera. So that, October 6th is our date for that and it's just giving ourselves the space to make that happen from a staffing and scheduling perspective. But there may be smaller designated groups of students. In particular, you asked about special education and we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Manning. Anybody else for Dr. Robertson? Ms. Owens?
Sorry, this is the last one. With the stipend, can you tell me, I guess, a little bit more about it? Is it a one-time per class taught or is it a per-student stipend? And have, how does it kind of work as far as the extra work that teachers are going to take on? Does it actually end up bringing their hourly pay down if they are working an extra four hours a day and the stipend only covers, you know, two hours or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, no. So obviously, everything, everything is budget-related. So I took the budgeted amount, I cut it in half because obviously you want to have it available for the whole year. I asked schools to give me an estimate of how many teachers will be interested in the stipend. And then I designed a sliding scale based on weeks. Knowing that it doesn't matter if you have one extra student in the face-to-face environment or five, the tasks and the synchronous instruction is going, are going to be the same, so it's a flat amount. So for example, we go back to school October 6th as an example and we're fortunate enough to be in school all the way through the remainder of the first semester. Elementary students, elementary teachers would earn $750 stipend. Secondary teachers will earn $375 per section of classes. So the average secondary teacher had two sections of, that fell in that scenario, so they would be 750. But there were some elementary or some secondary teachers who had three sections. That's $1,125. And so it's based on a sliding scale and it's for first term. It basically equates to almost a 1% raise on an average teacher salary for one semester.
And will all of our specialists be receiving it since they're going to have to teach the virtual kids and in-person kids?
Specialists are not receiving the stipend.
But they are going to have to teach both?
Well, specialists serve students in both capacities. They're not the teacher of record. They're not designing the lessons, they're not doing those type of things. They're going in to support teachers and providing high-quality instruction and they're going in to support students.
I meant like music teachers. Do they not write lesson plans?
Well, so music teachers are, they're, so music.
So they're not specialists?
They're not specialists.
So music and art and all of those will receive automatically the double?
Music and art, special education students that serve kids in both environments, yes.
Because are they getting an option to do the duel? Or if they are the art teacher, are you just assigned, you will do the duel?
No, 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 no. We, we ask, we ask the teacher to choose to accept the students, otherwise we're going to move them out.
Okay.
Yep.
Mrs. Riggs.
So it's a sliding scale, Ms. Anderson. So based upon us returning on October the 6th and that we would stay in session all the way through the end of the first semester or first term, it's $375 per section at the secondary level. But at elementary, we gave a flat fee of $750 because that was aligned to the average number of sections that secondary teachers had. And the teachers all have that scale too, Ms. Anderson.
Okay, Mrs. Riggs.
Because we're looking at if we were extending this, so is that, is SLC going to be open?
The SLC will be open when we're in a virtual environment for all of our students. So the SLC will be open until the week of October the 5th.
Mrs. Williams?
Dr. Robertson, you said about 50% of the teachers said that they would be willing to teach virtually and face-to-face?
So at the secondary level, I actually, during public comment when I was in there watching on TV, we're almost 80% of our high school teachers who are in that scenario selected to take advantage of the stipend. It was a little under 50% for middle school.
Okay.
And I haven't done the elementary yet.
And then we'll need, we'll need all them, but we won't, we won't really need that many to do both, right?
So, so with those numbers, I'm feeling really good about where we are with high school because I think we're going to be able to absorb all of our students in our own home schools at the high school level. I think with the less than 50% at the middle schools, we're going to need the central VLC in some capacity. And I'm very confident we're going to need the central VLC at the elementary school because Ms. Owens mentioned earlier, rightly so. You know, it's, it is incredibly difficult to run both sets when you have kindergarten, first, second, third, you know, even fourth and fifth.
Yeah, almost impossible. Thank, thank you to all our teachers who.
Yeah, that's why it was really important that the teachers had the opportunity to say no because it's, it's a, it's an additional task.
And Dr. Robertson, if I may, for the benefit of the public mostly, but we're not talking about teachers doing double prep. It's, could you just, it's going to be live streamed to the children at home?
Correct. So what we imagine happening is, and the beauty is, the teachers are going to be developing some of this on their own in terms of how they want to do it, but here are some options. As the teacher's providing live instruction, they're also using the technology that they have, that they would use if all the kids were virtual. So the virtual students will receive the same materials they would have received in a virtual environment, but they'll have the added advantage to pipe into the classroom and see the live instruction with the students. What will probably pair up at the secondary level, Don will have a buddy. If Don's virtual, Don will have a buddy in the face-to-face class to ensure that Don's screen is always in a position where Don can see the teacher providing instruction. Because obviously the kids are more mature, you can put some more responsibility on them like that.
Thank you. Okay, is that, and Ms. Owens?
That was the last one, this might be the real last one. I know that there was a, some questions and some issues about the recording of the live courses, particularly with the faces of the children on there. Where, where are we at with how that will happen and if there's going to be an expectation for teachers to pre-record and then be live and then?
Well, so we put together some guidelines for teachers on recording of lessons because the real purpose there is we recognize that there's going to be times where, at no fault of the child, they're going to miss the live synchronous instruction. And we want to make sure that they're, they're still having the benefit of that. So we put together some guidelines for teachers to record their instruction, their whole group direct instruction. Not everything that occurs in the class, but the most important part of the material and the presentation of material. We had some discussion in senior staff on Tuesday. We talked about some additional options we can make available to teachers. So like, for example, my wife is a fan of the flipped classroom model. So she's working with some teachers on the flipped classroom model, which means she will have a video of her instruction that she provides to her kids the day before. So that way, when they come in the class, it's all interactive, working the assignments together, full access to the teacher as an instructional tutor with the material being delivered in a flipped model. There's also a number of resources on the teaching and learning website or, related to resources through third-party vendors like Khan Academy is a great resource for math. There's some excellent resources also for English. So a teacher could decide based upon the lesson that they're going to access one of those third-party resources in lieu of recording their live instruction. But the goal is, we don't want kids to miss their learning opportunity, the material to interact with their learning because they happen to miss class.
Okay, it looks like that's it. Thank you, Dr. Robertson. So folks, we are down to standing committee reports before concluding our meeting. And I think we're going to be passing on that. We do have, and Madam, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the Planning, Performance and Monitoring Committee met via Zoom last week. Ms. Holtz and Ms. Felton and I participated with Dr. Bergen and some other folks. And there was, we had an update to the digital learning evaluation. We had a lot of good questions, so we've requested Dr. Bergen with Dr. Rogers to bring that information to the board at a workshop later on. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Edwards?
The Audit Committee met last week, reviewed a substantial portion of the Activity Fund audits. Had one of them that showed graphically why we need to do them. More details on that to come.
Okay, is that it? Okay, with that, we are going to be concluding the formal meeting at 12:29 a.m. and we'll allow some time to see if our speakers or our three speakers, non-agenda speakers are still on.
We have two of the speakers in the building.
Okay, but this is adjourned.